Order April 4th, 2023, 6:00 PM. We have received a copy of the previous meeting's minutes. Hi, how is your day approved? Motion has been made and seconded to approve the minutes. There is no opposition, motion passes. Moving down to appointments and hearings. First up, we have Taylor County EMS authority, consideration for bylaw amendments.
Last week, we had an informal discussion between both EMS agencies. Patricia was present, Paul was present. We've been having trouble getting a quorum for meetings. We had a membership of fifteen people where we had to have in minimum of eight to meet a quorum that we didn't have for a year. So we made some adjustments, which I've got a rough draft here that you guys can read. It's trimming the membership down to seven voting and three non-voting members. The seven, so the membership would be Flumington EMS with two voting members, Taylor County EMS with two voting members, Crafton City Hospital with one voting member, Office of Emergency Management with one voting member, one half-large seat that's a voting member that's been appointed by the commission in the past. And then the three non-voting representatives would be, currently would be Gavin Watkins from Taylor County EMS, Kelly Marshall from Flumington EMS, and then the county commissioner. That was the only actual change to the bylaws. Everything else still can function with the way the bylaws were written.
If this is going to help get a quorum so you can make decisions and approve things, I mean, I think it's definitely necessary. It's hard to get people to show up, I understand. Everybody's busy, everybody has things to do.
The ones that were removed were the three fire chiefs within the county. None of them had the time to do really anything other than what their jobs and, you know, their time that's put at the fire department. So it's kind of hard to get any of the three of them to come. All three of them were willing to not be a voting member like that. I talked to David Crim, Brian Roberts, and well, I hadn't had a chance to talk to Brian Rousey per se, but I spoke to his wife, who has shown up in the past as their representative. And all three of them were fine with not being a voting member. If they have an issue, they can still come to the meeting and voice their concern. So there was no objection to any of the members that have been removed and not being on the board any longer.
I move we approve the request for the bylaw change.
I'll second.
Motion has been made and seconded to approve the amendment of the bylaws for Taylor County EMS. There is no opposition, motion passes.
What we were just talking about, he'll bring, right now he hasn't fixed.
Once I get everything re-typed and official with the, well, you're going to fix the tax.
Well, yeah, he's, once he gets it all, because he has none of our.
I have to have a signature from one of the commissioners and then each director of each squad.
He'll bring the man for signature.
That's fine. All right, sounds good. Moving on down to Shannon Rudy. Is Miss Shannon here yet? We're a little bit ahead of schedule, she's not till 6:15. Who else we have on here that's?
Swish.
Swish.
Swish is here.
We're still waiting on two kids.
Still waiting on two children. And we're waiting on Patricia Allison, try soon.
If you want to, we can go ahead and move down to new business, which will be the fair housing resolution.
We can. We'll move on down to new business versus fair housing resolution consideration.
The grants that we do with Region Six require that we do a fair housing resolution and a fair housing action plan, which we have done every year. I don't know if you would like to read that, Tony?
Read it.
Well, if you choose to, I'll allow. And then if you guys may to.
Are you actually paid for reading this?
Yes, you do. Yes, you did.
All right, fair housing resolution. Whereas, the Taylor County Commission desires to give meaning to the guarantees of equal rights contained in the Constitution and laws of this state and the United States, and to encourage and bring about mutual self-respect and understanding among all citizens and groups in Taylor County. And whereas, under the federal Fair Housing Law Title VIII of the Civil Rights Act of 1968, it is illegal to deny housing to any person because of race, color, religion, sex, or national origin. And whereas, under the West Virginia State Fair Housing Law Title 49-2-305, MCA is illegal to deny housing to any person because of race, sex, religion, color, age, physical or mental handicap, or national origin. Therefore, be it resolved, the Taylor County Commission, West Virginia, makes a firm commitment to do all within its power to eliminate prejudice, intolerance, disorder, and discrimination in housing. Therefore, be it resolved, that a fair housing law poster which has the equal housing opportunity logo will be displayed at the Taylor County Courthouse. Therefore, be it also resolved, that the following procedures will be used to accomplish the purpose of the aforementioned resolution. Number one, the Taylor County Commission shall inform all Taylor County Commission employees of the Taylor County Commission's commitment to fair housing. Number two, the Taylor County Commission will post this resolution in Taylor County Commission buildings and other public places and publicize it. Number three, the Taylor County Commission shall direct all employees to forward immediately to the Taylor County Commission any reports they receive of housing discrimination. Number four, the Taylor County Commission shall forward such complaints to the West Virginia Human Rights Commission in Charleston, West Virginia, within ten days of receipt of said complaint. And this will be signed by the president of the commission. Did I do it good, Patricia?
You did well.
Would you like to make that as a motion, Tony?
I'll make that as a motion.
I will second it. Motion's been made and seconded to approve the fair housing resolution. None are opposed, motion passes.
Thank you very much.
Ms. Bond, since you came in, we're ahead of schedule. Our next appointment has not shown, so we've skipped down the agenda. But since you have come, if you would like to talk to us.
Oh, I will. Well, thank you. Well, that was.
You may have the floor.
Well, and of course, I think some of you already know that I am here opposed to the unisex restrooms in the courthouse building. So, and I did a little research, and Patricia handed me, of course, I've been talking with her, she handed me from WYK their take on the situation, which I'm not saying I disagree with. What I am saying is, we already have a unisex ADA bathroom on the first floor of the courthouse, and it is around the corridor underneath the stairwell. It's a straight-in, it's a locked door, it's a one-stall, it's, both men and women use it. So I don't think any of the women that are working over there on that floor are in favor of making it one stall in the existing restrooms that we have over there. And they certainly don't want it to be unisex. So I'm here as mouthpiece, if you will. So I don't know, and of course, there it says that there has to be one accessible restroom. It will need to be unisex, we already have that. So I don't know why we need to change the other two.
I think our thought was during the remodeling idea was that if we're going to remodel the bathrooms, we may as well make them wheelchair accessible now, because looking forward down the line, it's probably going to come to that necessity anyway. We have one now, we are compliant, but trying to look forward to the future. If you want a male restroom and a female restroom, I'm sure that can be arranged and negotiated, but to make them ADA compliant, I believe they can only be ones, we only have room for one stall from my understanding of it. But having three restrooms on the floor, if we have one that's unisex and ADA compliant now, if we leave it that way, would everybody be happy if we made a men's restroom and a women's restroom ADA compliant?
It still cuts down on the amount of restrooms. You've got twenty-five women over there on that floor, and we're constantly backed up in there, even with the ones that we have. And that's without public. So if you take somebody in the public and they're in there and they lock that door.
Another concern that I see.
They're not accessible for the workers.
That I see with that, on the other side of that, when we're doing early voting in an election, there won't be a restroom, Patricia's been warned.
Are you going to continue to use that hallway?
I certainly will.
Why don't you use the commission room for that, for voting?
I'm going to go and pad it over there, and that's for the security.
That's before they have this room too, as well, so. I don't care where you have, I'm just.
Yeah, I'm just saying.
I'm not trying to be argumentative, but I just know, you know, we're there every day, you know, seven hours a day, and there's a lot of women on that, using those restrooms.
One issue that Vaughn did bring up, and I did speak with WYK today, was about if someone's in that bathroom and they lock it, and there will be an incident, we can make it to where we have a key to where we can get in there. If I go in there, it's the same, I lock the bathroom, and it's a single occupancy bathroom, let's say I pass out. We will have a manual override, there will be a key that where we could get in there if we needed to in the event of an emergency.
I even went straight past it.
Well, I'm just saying, if you would notice. Or maybe you may hear him hit the wall. I'm just saying, there will be a mode of getting in there in the event of an emergency. And we'll do the same thing upstairs. Those doors will remain locked because of probation, but there will be a key in the event that we needed to get in there in the event of an emergency.
Well, and I understand your emergency situation. Well, if you just have somebody from the public that decides they're going to take a bath in there, which we have had happen many times, and they're in there at that restroom for an hour.
Someone with a key will get them out.
Well, only who's going to do that? It's a public restroom. They're in there using the facility.
But they're using it.
I know it's inappropriate, but.
Inappropriately, then that can probably be addressed. I mean, I don't work here every day. You all, you all do. I mean, is this the consensus with the assessors office and what?
I talked to Krista, she was going to try and be here, but she said to make sure that she, you all knew that she was also opposed to it, that she was.
Does she oppose the single stall?
Probably, yeah. We talked about the accessibility and the, just the amount of people in, using those facilities on that floor. So, yeah, I would say, yeah, she is.
So there's probably twenty-five total, how many total employees you think are on that floor with the guards and?
I would say probably somewhere between twenty and twenty-five. And that's not counting the women that come in from, on the public.
And I think that was kind of the idea of having all unisex, was if one's occupied and locked, then you can go to any of the other two, and you don't have to wait until a men's restroom opened up or a women's restroom.
But there aren't going to be urinals in there, those are just the toilet.
Hopefully by the time someone gets of age to, they can properly use the toilet, maybe, but I can't give it to you.
I think that the janitor does, but that doesn't happen. So you've got probably three to four men as well. And I'm just talking about sheriffs, bailiffs, and people going in and out of the sheriff.
So we have the public and twenty-five to thirty employees using those three daily.
Yeah.
I mean, something we can take into consideration.
I wish you'd taken another look at it.
Yeah, we'll have to.
I've been in the women's bathroom, how many stalls are in there?
Two.
Two?
There are two in the men's as well.
And I think there's one stall and a urinal.
One stall and a urinal.
That's in the men's.
I mean, we can look into it, we can, we can talk about it, it can be a discussion. We'll probably have to make a decision on it fairly quick, because I'm sure the contractor wants to know what supplies and material that.
Well, I'm sure it would change the scope of the project.
Right, but I mean, it's going to be a modification. I don't think it's really going to be a huge money adjustment.
The ladies over there would appreciate if you take another look at it.
We'll take another look into it and give it some consideration. And you guys are there every day for.
Yeah, absolutely.
Eighteen hours a day plus, and, you know, that, that, you know, input is definitely needed, so.
Well, and I appreciate you for your time, and of course, I hope you take your minds.
We'll see what we can do.
Okay, all right. That's all I wanted, so I'm leaving. Thank you.
Thank you, Amanda.
Hello, are you Miss Shannon Rudy?
Yes, thanks.
You are, you are up next.
All right, I'm sorry.
No, you're good, 6:15, we were just ahead of schedule.
I am here from the parent volunteer group that is planning and organizing the after-prom event. This will be our seventh year, so since 2015, we've had, every year except 2020, of course, when there wasn't a prom for COVID. And the event is immediately following the prom, lock-in type event, a DJ, food, activities, prizes, really an event to give the kids a safe place to be together and enjoy the rest of the evening, but really stay off the streets, just because, you know, prom, homecoming, those kinds of things, the rage of drunk driving for high school students and teenagers is so much higher. So we are requesting funding from the county commission. I think you guys did $4,000 last year. Our total budget is about $10,000. The majority of that is from the prizes. We do, we survey the kids on things that they would like, and we do everything from a Summers Dairy King, those are just, we just give out for like game-winning. But every person who attends gets a prize, even kids from other schools. So anything from a $20 gift card to a MacBook. So, and the bigger prizes really, you know, draw the kids, some of it dorm room stuff for, you know, graduating students. So, and all juniors and seniors can attend, and even kids who don't go to the prom can come to after-prom. So I wasn't there last year, but I did it in seventeen and eighteen, when my oldest daughter was a junior and senior, and now my youngest daughter is a junior and senior. So it's, it's just really a great event, and we have a great group of community people and parents who volunteer and stay all night. Once the kids are there, they're not allowed to leave until it ends at 5:00 AM, so gives their parents some peace of mind as well.
Shannon, I think that's a wonderful thing that you do, and I think that you and those others in both hands should be applauded. And, you know, we've always supported that, it's something that we can do for our youth and such. And I make that motion, and we've given a contribution of $4,000, and probably I'll take out a pool sandwich.
What was the cost of last year, Shannon, just?
I think it was just a little over $10,000.
And your budget about the same this year?
Yes, because we're repeating a lot of the same activities. There's a couple things that, they had like one of those flower walls for pictures and a couple other things that just weren't a huge hit, but everything else, we have like a paint and sip, so coffee, and somebody who facilitates painting. There's a guy who comes from Morgantown with an escape room, kind of in a box, yeah. And they have the old gym, of course, that's free, a DJ. So really, the prizes are the main, the main thing.
I'll second that with the understanding that one of the prizes will be a Ford Bronco.
Well, I have everybody there.
I mean, it may be a toy.
Yeah.
Well, it's been properly moved and seconded to contribute $4,000 to the Crafton High School after-prom. There is no opposition, motion passes. Thank you guys for what you do, and it looks like, I'm looking for your prizes, I mean, there's some awesome stuff that you can get in there. If something was like that, like it was available when we were in school, I wasn't aware of it, though.
Twenty fifteen was the first year.
Have you ever had any problem with any unruly member, unruly?
Not bad, and you know, the local sheriff's office, they come through. One year, we had a couple boys that tried to leave, but my husband chose.
I think that the biggest problem is kind of come down to. That's the same thing with the prom, you sign in, sign out.
Yeah, yeah, so, but they're good kids and well-behaved, and, you know, they just want to have a good time.
There must be some good food there too, huh?
All the junk food, chicken dip, you can eat.
Yeah, I might volunteer.
Tell them ever. Just have to stay up all night, that's the hard part.
Tony might win that Playstation 4.
If I'm not mistaken, is Taylor County one of the first counties in the area that you said?
It is, and you know, we get a lot of feedback from dates, you know, students from other schools, that they don't have anything like that at their school, and they're shocked that they can win a prize too. So it's, it really is a great, a great thing.
I'd probably fall asleep before, or I'd want to leave before then, so I'm not going to bother.
I doubt it, Tony, you close a place down.
Like I have before.
Well, we're glad we could help along with this project, and good luck, and thanks for everything.
Thank you, appreciate it, thanks.
Thank you for.
Keep up the good work.
And we will go on down to Patricia Allison, is Patricia Allison?
No, she's not.
Okay. Looks like Swish, you guys are up next.
I'll let them do it. They're going to be requesting ARP funds, and I'm going to let them do the presentation to you guys.
Okay, so me and some of my fellow teammates, this is definitely not all of them, but we're here requesting $7,500 to go towards the Swish program. I'll actually let them introduce themselves, but first off, I'm Peyton Freeman, I'm Jeremy's daughter.
I'm Natalie Dollar.
I'm Kierke Spring.
I'm Peyton Freeman.
I'm Jordan Cox.
Okay, so Swish is a 5-on-1(c)(3) nonprofit organization that's main focus is girls' basketball and providing the opportunity for out-of-season play for any dedicated sports players. We are, we currently have fifty young ladies in the tournament, spread out through the eighth groups, and we hope that number continues to grow. The $75 to $100 will help the program keep going and help any child afford the program if they are truly dedicated to the sport and want to play this out-of-season basketball. We really appreciate you guys taking the time to listen and take into consideration this funding.
Fantastic.
We appreciate you all coming and making this presentation. Do you all like have a set schedule for summer, or?
They have tournaments all the way out into, no wrap-up towards July, because school sports start. They've already attended one, they, they just, their age group just took second place in Martinsburg, and there was teams from seven states there. This not only services, these are some of our Taylor County, there's also high school kids that are in this, there's also kids from Harrison, and there's kids from, I believe, Lewis County that is also on this. But it's one of the girl-only travel teams that is around, because there's a lot of boy catered programs, but this is one catered towards the girls.
How long have you had this program, how long has it been going?
It's been going probably.
Well, ever since Reagan was in seventh grade.
This is our eighth year.
What, the age group, or what?
It starts in fifth grade and goes all the way to, you can go all the way up to an unsigned senior. So as long as they haven't signed with the college yet, they can still play in that travel ball.
What, do you have a question?
I don't think we need to put that under ARC. I think ARC's just for infrastructure. I would rather use a contribution out of either portion of the creation of Coke Sevens.
You know, the parks and the rec.
Can I take Coke Sevens?
May I ask what the $7,500 will be? Because we pay on requisition, you'll have to send in invoices for things that you purchase with the money, if we award you money.
It would be helped to help with the fees, because, and like helping girls travel.
Let me.
Sorry. Sorry, I'm nervous.
So they'll go through, we have to pay for the girls to practice, we have to pay practice fees, they practice at the bridge, they charge per hour, I think it's $35 per hour per team. Tournament, tournament fees for each team vary anywhere from $250 a team upwards to like $4, $4.50 a team per tournament. And then those other fees will also go to the kids that may not be able to afford the uniforms.
So these will be tangible things, correct?
Yes.
Yeah, that's, that's good. I'd make that motion.
And I'll second.
Motion's been made and properly seconded to award $7,500 to the Swish team. Good luck and work hard. I've seen you guys play middle school. Guys, I like it, I like, I like the hustle. I like the aggressiveness, I like the hustle, so keep at it, keep working hard.
I follow you ladies on Facebook, and you all do an awesome job, and you represent Taylor County well. Thank you for your efforts.
There's no opposition, motion passes. Well, thank you guys for coming. If you want to stay, you may stay, if you would like to leave, I don't know if you guys agree. At least two of you might not have a right.
Are you in school more than the music?
Okay. Patricia?
Oh, that's.
You're up.
Hello, my name is Patricia Allison. I am the owner of Milestones and Music. We are a music therapy private practice based in Crafton, and we are coming up to our third year of our high dumps jam camp. And so this is our music therapy summer camp for kids in this area and surrounding counties with special needs. And so, this is our music therapy summer camp for, um, kids in this area and surrounding counties with special needs. Um, kids and young adults. We do have some young adults that come. And, um, the last couple of years, we have come and had your support, and so we were hoping to come and, uh, get some more support from you guys. It's been really helpful to have your contribution. Um, it gives us one less thing to have to worry about. We try to keep this camp, uh, completely free to our families. Um, it's a week long, and so, you know, for expenses, we have our location. Um, we have our craft and our snacks, um, that we provide for the students. And then our biggest purchase every year is also our instrument bags. So, we try to provide each of our campers with an instrument bag. Um, our goal this year is to do mini keyboards, so it's kind of a big goal, but we have a lot of campers that are repeat campers, and they have all of our smaller instruments, and so we're going to try to, um, up the, the prize at the end, I guess. Um, and yeah, this year is really exciting because we have had, uh, two successful camps in the last, um, two years. Uh, multiple camps, but especially in Taylor County. Um, we are implementing a new type of buddy program where our veteran campers are going to be paired with some of our newer campers, and so just helping to foster those connections as well. Um, but yeah, we provide T-shirts, um, we do crafts. It's, uh, two hours for five days. And then at the end, we do, um, like a performance. Last year, we actually got to utilize, uh, Buffalo, Buffalo flats, which was pretty cool. Um, it's not Buffalo flats, what's it called? Yeah, you know what I'm talking about, right over there. And so, we got to do it outside, uh, but yeah.
Toad Hall.
Toad Hall, thank you. Sorry.
I knew what you were talking about.
Yeah, you know, you know. Yeah, I know, too. Yeah, Toad Hall. So, and we, we did our performance up against a new painted mural, and it was really cool. We got some really good pictures. But, yeah, so.
Well, how much is your request for, Ms. Patricia?
Oh, fifteen hundred, and that covers the entire cost of the camp.
I think we contributed that last year, if, if memory serves me correctly.
I'll make a motion we approve.
Second. Motion's been made and seconded to approve fifteen hundred for High Nuts. That's what you.
Yes, High Nuts Jam Camp, yes.
High Nuts Jam Camp.
Thank you so much. We really appreciate it. It's the last, it's, it's a lot of fun.
Good luck, have fun.
Thank you.
I hope you get a good turnout again this year.
Thank you so much. Yeah, we do. We combined our, um, Bridgeport camp last year, too. We actually brought our Bridgeport camp into Taylor County. So, we got a lot of new people coming through, so that was pretty cool, yeah.
Awesome.
Yeah, so. Um, I gotta go to music theater. Onto the next one. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, we'll move on down. Can you say Hunter Kovak has canceled?
He did. He, he wants to reschedule. He had a family emergency.
Reschedule him, and we'll get on to grants and projects.
And I do not have any updates or any invoices that need to be addressed on this matter.
Okay.
She does not come to none.
She is not.
Well, with, without.
None of us, she surprises me.
All right, moving on down to AIA contract for courthouse renovation.
Okay. Make sure that one's she. Um, as you guys saw last meeting, you approved for the courthouse project to do the bathrooms and the stairwells and hallways. This is a contract that has all the great terms on it. The contractor has already signed. I just need signature from the commission. And if any changes are made to the bathrooms, they will be addressed as just a change order at a later date. It does meet all the terms. I sent it to John Ford. He did not have any adjustments to the contract.
You guys want to look over the contract, too, or?
Yeah.
We approved, we approved it. This is something we approved. We need to approve again.
You just need to sign the contract.
There's nothing else we need to approve.
It has the contingency, the increase for the forty-five thousand and the contract price with the hundred-and-fifty dollars.
And that the contractor is, uh.
Laborary.
Same guy that, that the prosecuting attorney's remunerated, clerk's office used to be. And they did a nice job on that.
They did a nice job. They did a very good job. So, I just need signature on the contract. And then once, we'll give her, hopefully, a certain date while the temporary sentence is going to be contingent upon materials. And thank you so much.
And we have renovations to Judge Nine's office.
Right. As you know, um, we have a new circuit judge, and so Judge Hawsey is taking what was Judge Nine's space. And Judge Nine will be taking what was Judge Moat's space. The only thing it really needs is painting and carpet. I'm still waiting for a price for the painting, but I did get a price for the carpet, which will include the judge's office, his secretary's office, and the law clerk's office. It's for eight-thousand-three-hundred-and-seventeen dollars. And it will be the same carpet that we used in the space we just renovated for what is now Judge Hawsey's. I just need approval.
So, that will take care of both offices?
That will take care of Judge Nine's space, his new space, his secretary's space, and then the law clerk's space. Because we just did, remember the space we did upstairs was really for Judge Nine's, and then we've got the new judge. He's moving into where Judge Moat's used to be, and that's been that before I came. I think that space probably hasn't been renovated in probably close to thirteen years. So, it just needs paint and carpet.
Judge Nine's space is old prosecutor's space, correct?
Well, what was now Judge Hawsey's space is the old prosecuting attorney's space. Yes. So, it's, we did some flopping, so, but it needs carpet and paint.
We need carpet where the old carpet is at?
The green carpet, yes.
Take up the shang.
Yes, it's green.
Okay.
So, eight-thousand-three-hundred-and-seventeen.
I didn't even look at the paint, though.
No, I haven't got a price for the paint yet. It's, uh, they want to do the same color as in the other, but I just haven't got a price from the contractor yet for that.
What do you think, gentlemen? You want to put carpet in there for Judge Nine's?
We better, he'll put his own down. I'll make the motion we approve.
I'm second. Motion's just been made and seconded to do carpet for eighty-three seventeen. You will later get a paint number. No opposition, motion passes.
The other law clerk got appointed to Barber County Prosecutor, right?
Correct. Yes.
That worked out good, huh?
Yeah. So, I don't know who's going to be the new law clerk. I don't know the interesting ones, and I haven't heard that name yet.
All right, moving on down to budget revisions from county clerk's office.
So, I have a resolution here. This is a budget revision for last fiscal year, um, twenty-two point three. The resolution, um, grants me to do the budget revision and to sign my name. So, I need, uh, a motion to adopt the resolution so I can submit this budget revision. You guys can look over.
Do you want to read the resolution?
I'm a designated reader. Oh, this is easy to read. It's very dangerous. Okay, let's read. "A regular session of the Taylor County Commission held April four, two oh two three. The following order was made and entered. Subject: The revision of the levy estimate budget for the county of Taylor. The following resolution was offered. Resolved: That subject to approval of the state auditor as ex-officio chief inspector of public offices, the county commission does hereby direct the budget be revised prior to the expenditure or obligation of funds for which no appropriation or insufficient appropriation currently exists, as shown on budget revision number three, a copy of which is entered as part of this record. The adoption of the following resolution having been moved by and seconded by, the vote thereon was as follows. Whereupon the Taylor County Commission declared said resolution duly adopted, and it is therefore adjudged and ordered that said resolution be and the same is hereby adopted as so stated above, and the Taylor County clerk is authorized to fix his signature on the attached request for revision to approve budget to be sent to the state auditor for approval." Now, Jared, explain what I just read.
So, what that is, is your fiscal year twenty-two, twenty-three.
Let me see that.
Any place that was, what was in your original budget that more money was taken out, you have to do a budget revision to show where that money was put back in in order to bring your budget back up to equal out. So, you're signing a resolution for me to submit that budget revision to the state auditor to put those funds where they needed to be to cover the expenses for the fiscal year.
That authorizes Jared to sign that revision.
Since I read it, I'll make a motion to approve.
I'm second. Motion's been made and properly seconded. There are none opposed. Motion passes. Do we all three need to sign this, or you want to just?
I just got to write your names and then write yes, yes, yes on there. Yep.
And is that anywhere?
Nope.
All right, moving on down. This looks like a question. I am responding.
Oh, it's not a question.
It's a statement.
And, uh, in the past, the county commission has always covered the I am responding software that I think emergency services and maybe even law enforcement uses. So, Ryan Roberts got a request asking if the commission's going to cover that again. I don't have a cost, and I don't know, Jared, if you were able to find.
I did, and I'll have to search some of the files.
So, I guess at this point, since I don't have a cost, are you interested in entertaining that? I, I can't remember.
Where'd the cost go?
Yeah, and I apologize. He tried to get it to me tonight. I just didn't get a cost today.
That won't mess up their schedule or anything, though.
Um, it expires, let me see. I don't think I have an expiration date. If it's something urgent, I will let you all know, but I know you guys have covered it for the last five or six years. But I'm sure there's going to be an increase this year. It's on Flumington, Crafton, and Taylor County Emergency Squad, and Piscaville.
So, we are in that contract?
Yes, you are.
We haven't used that service.
Ever.
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 So, maybe.
That might sound a bit naive.
I'll talk to Ryan.
Yeah, they're giving it, let's not do it.
Yeah.
I mean, the others are using it, but the fact that we have staff in-house, we do not have an on-call staff at all, means I am responding as a member of the point, correct?
Okay, I can see about what the costs would be to remove Taylor County EMS.
I am responding is from nine-one-one saying that when a call goes out and it's answered, nine-one-one knows who's responding to what situation is what that is, and it's viewed on DBs and all that kind of stuff.
So, when a call goes out, it's whoever's.
Okay, so, I'm also a member of the volunteer fire department. So, I have an app on my phone for I am responding. So, say, uh, a call goes out in, uh, Knoxville, brush fire. I live on Maple Avenue. So, they know it's only going to take me about two minutes, if that, to get to the firehouse. If I push my I am responding, they know to wait thirty seconds for me to get there because they've got two minutes to get dressed and get out the door as well. They know, maybe that first truck will roll out first, but the next truck's rolling in. They can say, oh, Shaw left the house at such, she's responding at such and such a time. She should be getting here about now. So, you don't have five apparatuses going out with one man in them. It allows for you to know that, okay, I've got three guys responding to this call. I'm going to wait that second truck for about two minutes so that they can get on and get on the one truck.
So, they need the call seconded or.
Yes.
Uh, mid-berge or whatever the case is, they can do that by.
Yes.
So, EMS doesn't use it, but.
Flumington EMS.
All the time.
Flumington EMS, she uses it because they are a volunteer agency that come from home. Yeah.
Taylor County EMS is.
Because they're staff.
Because you have staff.
Right, they're paid.
Ready to go.
Yes.
You're not waiting for a volunteer to respond, so they might want to get to.
Right, and they may be on their stand because they're given so many users. I don't know. I'll check into that. I don't know the cost.
Yeah, if we can eliminate Taylor County EMS, we may save some money.
Right.
But it sounds like it's a, it's a functional app, I mean.
Right. It's geared more towards volunteer type of agencies.
Okay.
Thank you.
Hey, Paul, Bob, or, uh, Jim can answer your question.
Yeah, and I tried to log through to see if I could get some cost, and like, so I reached out to Ryan. He just wasn't able to get me enough room before it's lights meeting. I'll carry it over.
Oh, we had first time or not, so. Yeah.
He did.
Yeah. The separate.
I'm not, I'm here.
We'll move along here down to personnel matters.
Yeah, I'm going to executive session and personnel issues.
Is this one that you need me to say for? Do you need me to say? Okay.
I'll make the motion. We go into executive session at six forty-six E M.
Motion passes and ready to accept.
Need to take that, uh, video off and.
Sorry, Terry.
Let everybody else come back in.
I wanted to switch and find you for just one moment to plug this one back in, too.
Sheriff, you're up, sir.
Last meeting, I presented the figures on investment fund for state investment. And this is an update letter, possibly revised again. I'm going to take your job, Terry. Uh, reference to investment fund from coal severance and the coal reali- reallocation fund. Their commissioners please consider investment of funds from the Taylor County Coal Severance and Coal County real- reallocation to the West Virginia money market pool. With Taylor, the county's seven million dollar investment from the general county has returned you two-hundred-and, two-hundred-and-eleven thousand, two-hundred-and-thirty-one dollars, twenty-four cents. The investment is yielding at a rate of four-point-eight-three percent for the month of March. Uh, the money we had in the bank was getting, um, so.
And we need that, what, forty-eight hours, twenty-four?
Twenty-four hours. Now, you can have access, and we blocked that money to see, you know, it's, it's, it's always fine. And, uh, that's been a good investment, you know, from, from, we, we went from zero to two-hundred-and-eleven thousand. That's pretty good. So, this is the fund, or the letter to request that, um, to invest that money out of those two accounts, a million each. And I said, that's not a lot. You've still got enough money in there, but if you need to get that, you've got twenty-four hours, you can get it.
There you go.
So, the, the question is, do we want to take a million from coal severance and a million from coal reallocation fund and invest in, put in this investment fund, which we can access with no penalty at any time within twenty-four hours notice?
Yeah, we're going to use a good portion of that reallocation fund for that sewer project.
We are, but that may not come to play for another year. Well, knowing how fast these sewer projects move, it may be two years, uh, so.
Well, your money's making.
Our money's at least.
It's not just sitting there and growing nothing.
It's accessible. It's making money. Uh, I see no reason not to.
I'll make a motion.
And I'll second it. Will that be in addition to what's in there now?
Correct.
Yeah, we might as well.
Motion's been made and seconded to move a million out of coal severance and a million out of the coal reallocation fund to the state investment. No opposition, motion passes.
Yeah, you'll just need, you'll just need to give her letter that authorizes it.
Okay. We'll give that to Jared. Back in.
Yep, yep.
And.
I think I missed the conversation on the bathroom. I think I missed the conversation on the bathroom, which I just allowed that I need to wait for.
No, if you want to go ahead, we've already talked about it, but if you want to put your two cents in, we haven't made a decision on it, we took it under consideration.
Well, um, the only thing that I would like to add, of course, the tax office called me and said, hey, you're gonna be there, would you represent us or we need you to go? Well, I couldn't pass it to you all. By making those bathrooms, I think, I might be misreading what you're wanting to do. You're gonna be taking urinals out of the men's restroom, we just got a stall in there, and you'll have a stall and it work women, so anybody could use them restrooms. Here's the problem I see. I got a lot of older guys that work security, some of them smell problems. When they gotta go, I let us be in court, they gotta go. And if you have both women, both restrooms tied up with women in there, because you got a lot of women on this, on that, on that floor, and our guys can't, that's gotta go from, from the security station to go use the bathroom real quick and get back to the security station, that, that might cause problems. By this, is, is, is there a law that this has to be done like this or something?
We have to be ADA compliant for at least one restroom for the floor, which we are right now with the third restroom underneath the stairs. And it is unisex now.
Yep.
So we're compliant for now. What the idea was with laws moving down, down the line, how things are going, eventually they're probably gonna go, they all have to be handicap accessible. And if we're remodeling now, we wanted to kinda head that off of the past and be proactive rather than reactive when the law does pass or does pass, to spend more money remodeling. So that was kind of the thought behind it, but obviously there's some pushback on.
Well, I may ask this, like your other question, can a wheelchair not get in there and use a stall?
I, I'd be, quite honestly, I've never been there.
I think if you.
I don't know, the only question I have, where if you get a guy that's black, a woman wants to go in a women's bathroom, you can't keep them out.
I don't wanna go there.
I don't either, but that's another situation you're wanting to be frontin'. I mean, or if a woman wants to go in a men's restroom and your security guard is in there doing what they have to do, but what are you gonna do? I mean, I don't know. You're gonna. And so I think that's the whole thing behind this ADA thing is to prevent any of those repercussions and problems.
That's the whole idea behind the unisex, is making them two bathrooms to where whichever one's open, regardless of your gender or your, how you identify, you can use whichever one is open.
You can put a flipper box in there too.
It's not. We, we accept too much in society, we accept too much. I don't disagree with anybody, but we're accepting too much, and I think this is a start. If this is, does not, if the federal government don't come in and say, you gotta do this, I don't think it should be done. That's my opinion, and ninety percent of the people that's in that building that has to use those, it's insane. Probably ninety-nine percent.
I don't disagree with you, Terry, I agree with you overly, but I don't agree with how society's going, but that's the way it is anymore.
Well, I mean, we haven't.
Bathroom, bathroom, what are you gonna do?
I mean, we haven't remodeled it yet, we're just trying to improve the facilities we have. It hasn't been remodeled since nineteen seventy, whatever, ever. So if you're gonna spend the money now, we might as well try to do what we can to, to get up to what it's gonna be in the future. But if the consensus on the whole building is, we want a men's restroom and a women's restroom, and we want multiple stalls and, uh, to keep it the way it is, um, then, you know, they may, that may be an option as well. Then if federal law mandates that we change it, then we'll have to spend the money off, but.
You can easily make one a man and one a woman. That's not so much an issue at this point. If it comes up, it's gonna have to be addressed. If you get someone who's saying, I identify as a woman, and we all question that, that's gonna have to be addressed at that point, but you can easily make one a man and one a woman. Issue right now seems to be making them multiple stalls. If you make them multiple stalls, they cannot be ADA compliant, there is not enough.
So there are multiple stalls now, so if two, is the men's single stall?
It's a toilet and a urinal.
Can you lock the door from the inside?
No, you lock the stall door.
You lock the stall door, but that's it.
Yeah.
And that's, they, everybody that works there wants to keep it as it is now, with two stalls and a stall on the urinal, men's, women's. And then we have one unisex that's handicap accessible.
I don't know if the urinal's such an issue. I think they just wanna keep it men and women.
The, the urinal is an issue.
Oh, the urinal is an issue.
The urinal, because you got.
You're having both, couldn't you?
You got, you got some guys, some weird guys, that that's hard to get in.
Can I interject here real quick?
And then if you've got, if you've got two guys that has to go use the bathroom, you've got two places that they can use.
You've got a problem.
What's that?
OSHA standards require for every fifteen employees, so if you have fifteen female employees and one male, you have to have at least, no, if you have sixty, once you hit that fifteen mark, you have to have two stalls for female, one for the.
Well, we have six bathrooms in the courthouse. We have seven bathrooms in the courthouse. So I think that, that's, you know, that OSHA thing, but James is with W R K's and we're all kinda looking at it, and you guys have a letter with his recommendation.
Do you guys have that?
Yeah, maybe twice.
I mean, we'll just have to, we'll have to come to a decision on it. I said, I don't, I don't work in that floor. You do. Your tax office folks do, the assessor's office folks do, the clerk, circuit clerks folks do. Are there bathrooms in the prosecuting attorneys?
Yes.
That's their bathroom over there.
Yeah.
So we don't have to worry about it.
To my knowledge, I think they're content with what they have, I mean, to my knowledge.
Did we have the one there with the steps and the entrance?
It's.
Then the men and the women are on this side.
Yeah.
Then we have.
Two downstairs.
Downstairs in magistrate's area. And then we have some upstairs in the third floor.
Yes.
Or second.
I think that's gonna walk to one thing.
Yeah, they're gonna be. They're long. They're long. They would, yeah.
We, we are wondering how many of the restrooms are open to public, though?
They are, technically, except for the ones upstairs, they keep those locked the majority of the time. And then down in the magistrate area, you have one that's for men and women, public, and then you have one that's for men and women employees downstairs.
There's one in the back of the courtroom too.
Yeah, but it's.
I know they take.
Yes.
They used to bring them downstairs, but I think they're using that.
I just want to say, Sheriff.
You can make the men's bathroom ADA compliant with the urinal, it's just gonna be the women's bathroom with the spaces.
Yeah.
That's the only thing. Men's wouldn't be a problem.
Just want women to come in.
Yeah, yeah, if you, and you can separate them and make the men's ADA compliant for being accessible, it's just gonna be an issue with the space, with the women's putting two full-size stalls.
Yeah.
That's where, that's where it runs into.
If you want.
They, they don't have enough room.
They don't have enough room. So there's certain guidelines with that ADA, and I'm assuming you're talking about Americans Disability Act, that it has to be a certain width in order to get a wheelchair in and out, and if you put, if you put two stalls in those small spaces, you can't get enough door width and still have room to get in that bathroom with a sink and everything. So the only way around that is make one stall that's three-quarter the size of both of those stalls and still have room for your sink, and it'll be ADA compliant.
There's no way of making the women's restroom two stalls an ADA compliant. If, if you're going to make them ADA compliant.
You have to pick some Christmas.
That would be the next thing.
What was that, I'm sorry?
And it is.
And it is working with wide enough.
Yes.
They are wide enough.
Yes. So you have to, like I said, you can make one man's and one's a woman. That's not an issue, so for men, women, but if you want them ADA compliant, it's one single use at a time. They cannot be multiple stalls any.
Well, could we do this?
Okay.
Make a men's restroom, other women's restroom, make the men's restroom ADA compliant, then we'll have our third unisex restroom ADA compliant, and we'll have the women's restroom, two stall, don't lock the outside door, and they can have what they want. And if you're, if you're in a wheelchair and you're.
What was that, can you repeat that? Make the men's ADA.
Make two ADAs, the men's and the unisex that's under the steps.
Okay.
Make those ADA compliant, that way, if you're a woman in a wheelchair, you can use the one under the steps.
That Orville's point, once you can't use that, don't relax some time.
Do you want people to come and see your office, come in here to vote, Jared?
I mean, no, but.
Keep it in the hallway where it's open. I mean, it's, it's gonna affect your office if we put voting, like Vaughn recommended, we put voting in here, early voting, you're gonna have an impact through your office.
But, I mean, I wouldn't be opposed to it, just for plain and simple fact, I'm gonna have two or three people out of my office working that early voting. So if they're already in my office, they have everything they need right here, so I wouldn't be opposed to it, because they're just gonna come through and come into here. So I mean, that's something we could table instead of having it over there.
We could have a lineup in the hall there and.
I mean, personally, for me, I don't think it's gonna make any more of an issue for mine, as long as they're not coming back through my doors and coming in our offices and stuff like that, I'm gonna have my employees working that early election anyway.
You don't have your security scanner for them to go through.
Yeah, that's the other.
Are they there?
It's your security scanner, you wouldn't have that for them to walk through with the purse and everything.
They wouldn't be able to wand them?
They, they can wand them, but that's, that's not showing what's in purses and stuff.
My question is, is could we put something out there where if they have purses and such, purses aren't necessarily needed to vote, they could leave them out at the security station?
I don't, I mean, I wouldn't, I wouldn't wanna be responsible for that.
Okay.
It's because you know what's gonna happen. Oh, I'm gonna say, well, I had two hundred dollars in there, and it's not in there now.
Whatever you guys decide about the bathroom, I mean, it's workable, whatever you all decide, we're just, I told that the contractor, no, but I'm just telling you, you can't have two stalls and them be ADA compliant. That's what they're saying.
The complaint, for the most part, from what I understand, is, I mean, the, the women personnel highly outnumber the men personnel, so they're requesting multiple stalls in their restrooms, I understand. So I think that's the situation, and, and to be quite honest, if, you know, if you're, if we have, except if we do the men's ADA, the unisex ADA, and the, the women's ADA, maybe during elections, we can open up the men's as unisex, put a unisex thing on the, the door if the one under the steps isn't available. So it doesn't have to be unisex all the time, it can be the men's, except for early voting time, it's unisex, so the ADA compliance is there. If you're in a wheelchair, you have to use restroom, you'll have that to use.
But they'll keep their urinal.
I think we can keep their urinal and.
Are we keeping your urinals in all the bathrooms now then? Are we just on this floor, what are we doing?
I wonder what these women do when they go to the hall.
I, I personally.
Go to Walmart, what do they do? Do they, do they, do they get home, or do they go in the unisex or ADA compliant bathroom? Or they go back to the. Do you pee at home or?
We are, they, everyone's very, very seldom.
I never heard so much garbage over a bathroom.
Very, very seldom you see a wheelchair come in, very few. Uh, most people's got a walker or something, something like that, and, but once in a while, and they, you know, usually, my experience with, with handicapped people, they know they're only gonna go down to the courthouse, they make sure they go at home before they get down here, so they don't run into that problem. Very seldom you have them going.
One bad thing is, one bad thing is that one time that that person didn't go at home.
But you, yeah, but you've got the bathroom there under the steps that can be used.
Yeah, the one under the steps is, is, you can put a wheelchair in it, can't you?
Yes.
Right.
You can't, I've never measured to, I mean, we use it as, I don't know if officially, I mean, it's a little qualification, I, I've never looked at it in that sense, as far as I'm aware, it actually is truly ADA compliant, just as we're calling it.
I mean, there's a reason that they can change that men's to unisex during election time, if it's for a week.
There's certain doors and turn around.
I've never heard.
But I hope you understand that with, with the guys that has to work there, they love the stuff, they gotta get to the bathroom, get back to the security station, they have the girl washing her pregnant, and, you know, because they could have in the urinal and the stall is very, very helpful.
Do we know? Thank you, Terry.
You're welcome. Just an update, and this is already in the news, you know, I'm sure you've heard that the body we have found, um, it's being investigated. We have telephoned that are, you know, they're, the community out there doesn't really, at this time, we don't think that, you know, there's a concern with, that they need to, that they're afraid that somebody's out there stalking people, but that's not, I've even had that there was a dog hung there next to it, there's all kinds of stories out there, so it's, this, if, if you guys get a call, just tell them everything, being taken care of, uh, we're investigating this with the, uh, Whitehall police, we did find the vehicle there at the Walmart, uh, in Whitehall, and we're trying to track our steps now. So the only thing, or where your cam, where your church is, there's your cameras? No cameras? Okay.
Not yet, there won't be.
So.
Is the lady from that area or?
She's from the Boozville area, yes.
Terry, that, that store, my exam is outside of.
Yeah, they, they have, I know they have them inside, but, uh, we got an officer checking on that, and now we're scanning that whole area for cameras and stuff to try to, that's a good distance to travel in.
There is one more thing real quick. Out on Cherry Run, there's been Ford cars out there for like at least a year, right along the road, if you go out like that, you go on Cherry Run, you go on the Moon Bridge, turn out, there's no sign of anyone traveling. I think it's a van, I mean, obviously it's got to be a van, cars right along the road. I saw it out there in the fall, and my buddy I was going with today said that, hey, there's a car, it's been there for almost a year, I mean, I don't even remember seeing that car.
So it's on private property?
He said it's on, it's, it's right, maybe it's, if they're out, we'll have to check it out, it's been there a while.
And far as, we keep checking, the, over here, below Grand Street, there's no sign of anybody actually staying there, there was a boy over there repelling one day, the signs is still, there's still signs up there.
Did anybody find that car yesterday?
No, that was on, um. Today's Tuesday. Uh, Sunday morning, it was there.
They found the body first, how did they know there was a car involved?
Well, she had a, she had a car, and we knew that, and we, uh.
Maybe she had a purse, maybe that had.
She had a key on her. We, we talked to the family members and stuff, and, and really, I can't say too much about that, but it's, um, but the people, I, I, Jeff, Jeff, Jeffries, she's been told to help her people, and maybe it's actually people helping try and find the car, and she said, um, it's, uh, it's a shame that we're, um, just, until we get the premises and stuff back to the land, it's gonna be hard, hard to go. But it just, if, if you have, I'm sure you guys will get calls, and, and terms and stuff.
Taken care of.
It's, it's being taken care of.
You don't blame me, you call Terry Austin, he'll tell you. We got a front back.
There we go.
Well, yeah, we'll give them the D N R lock, maybe that, what they're going, they, if they don't step it up, we'll just, we'll just take it.
Because I, I've had multiple people since then.
Oh, I'm. Oh, I haven't hit.
And it's respectable, it does. Three years ago, when something like that happened, were there like, community members get together, go help out the neighborhood, clean up the stuff?
Well, yeah. I feel you're gonna say we have more pride than people. So that's, that's where we won't get on that one.
You don't have any new hires, do you? Okay, well, it's next one, and Jen, I wanted to get you before you left.
Okay.
Thank you, Terry.
You're welcome.
Be careful out there.
Just to touch base on the new hire thing, I don't have, I have several candidates for the security position. So I'm probably this week, I'm gonna reach out to them and, um, kinda work out some idea of a schedule, because we actually have a pretty good many who are interested. And I'll submit those names, I'll submit them to the sheriff's office, and hopefully, on the next meeting, have maybe some recommendations for who works for security.
Okay, fantastic. Down to elected official reports. Anybody want to report anything?
I don't have a, a report. You, you never got any information that I have a sheltered workshop meeting?
I do not, I do know they're going to come to you all, I think possible to the next meeting, when you guys asked us to get some bids for some roofs. Um, today was the deadline for that, those bids, and we received one. Um, obviously, I haven't opened it, but, um, I will bring that to the next commission meeting, but that's all I know. Time to have, not heard anything else from them in terms of a meeting.
I did get a man, my one meeting last weekend, they're very appreciative of our services, and they're, they're working with, uh, Brian Roberts on the radios, and they're, when they get them installed, they're willing to come over and help get, get all those set up. Also, we had a region six meeting, and, uh, we see the gesture there, we had that transportation meeting, and, um, for the region six, the Marion County seniors, Marion and Lucino, uh, and her office was there. Uh, so, I think they're still supposedly going to start with some sort of a survey here in the county to see our needs about the transportation blessing or something of that nature in conjunction with Marion County and possibly Harrison County. And also, we had that meeting with the ambulance authority, and, uh, is that why you're here tonight, to discuss anything of that nature?
We were just here for the first part.
We were the first one, we just kinda stuck around to see what was going on.
Yep.
We wanted to hear about bathrooms. Really learn about bathrooms.
Seeing that thing, we were like, that ambulance authority, and with collaboration with, uh, Taylor County, and funding, so that's fantastic.
Uh, we did attend, um, a state meeting last Wednesday. Um, and the state has, or is in the process of passing, ten million dollars in funding for EMS. And the first, uh, the first way that that money would be distributed, which benefits Taylor County as a whole, is that you have to have a special EMS levy in place, of which we already do, so that puts us higher with trying to get some of that funding. Um, second is that you have, um, the, the levies all combined are almost maxed out, of which we do have lots of levies in this county. That's the second way of getting this funding. And the third way of getting this funding is that you're already competing with other outside agencies to keep staff, of which we do. I mean, we're still currently staffed, and we've hired more people since we were here the last time. Um, but that funding is supposed to come down the pike at some point, of which it would come to you guys first before it would come to us, so...
Wouldn't that be great?
Yeah.
Yes, it would.
Sounds like we're well qualified. Only thing I have, uh, next Friday, put on your schedule for the EDA trout stocking. Uh, we're having an event at the high school, ten AM, uh, bring kids, you know, there's gonna be tables set up, bring your fishing pole.
Rain or shine.
Rain or shine, there's gonna be monster trout stocked in the Taggart River, so... Uh, I did speak with a couple representatives from the, uh, the DNR about, uh, getting three fourth street on the trout stocking list of streams, and, uh, they're looking into it right now to see if they can add us to it. And, uh, you can get, get another stream, put on Taylor County's list of stocked streams other than lower Taggart.
You guys did approve for four dumpsters, for dumpsters today, which we're going to do on Earth Day. Getting approval from everyone, except I have not got approval from Thornton yet, to place it out there. So I've reached out to her a couple different times.
Who has that?
Lee or Laura. So I've reached out to Sheri Moore, and she has tried to reach out to me. I don't think it's gonna be an issue, I'm just having trouble, I think she's had something going on, and maybe it's been a little bit preoccupied or something, but I can't say that for sure, but anyhow.
We're trying to do it on the twenty-second.
Yes, yes. I did already talk with the county state and have everything set up in terms of the dumpsters have been reserved. I just need to get approval to put one out Thornton.
So our dumpster, our dumpster placement's gonna be Thornton, Boozville-
Flemington and Thornton. Thornton, Boozville, Flemington, and Webster.
Webster.
I've already got Tony's approval.
Yeah, but since she said she was gonna give me five hundred dollars for doing that.
It's a personal check from Sam. So like I said, they're all real good, um, I'm just waiting for Thornton.
The last time we did the dumpster days, it was a huge success, and they overflowed with stuff instead of going over the hill, which is the ultimate goal to not happen. Uh, we have too many dump sites that have been cleaned up for, for the years, and we did finish up with our roadside cleanup already. Uh, our, our, our crew picked up one nineteen from Mon County to Barber, fifty from county line to county line, two fifty the whole way. And we added on to, from Simpson or from Webster, Tony's old store, out Clear Pass, Flemington, all the way to the county line. I think they picked up some ten thousand pounds of trash, that's just along the roadside, so... That was funded by the Taylor County Commission, it was not funded by the state.
Well, as you were said, told Sam, I talked with Department of Highways, and they said they received tons of calls from citizens thinking it was the Department of Highways expressing their appreciation. Of course, the Department of Highways is telling people that it was the county commission, but it certainly was wrong for us.
Coming into tourism season here in the next month, uh, it's money well spent, and makes coming into Taylor County look a lot better, especially to our visitors coming to Memorial Day, and our lake, and our river, and every other reason they may come.
So it's the twenty-second of April?
Twenty-second of April. So get your old-
Couch.
Couch out. Don't, don't take it to Wrigley Town and burn it on the street.
I saw a cat on Route of Webster when I came in. Back to elected officials report. At my senior center that I'm part of, uh, we're having some problems out there, the trees. If you notice where the people park against the hill, some of those trees are dead, and they're falling. In fact, last year, one tree demolished a car, and another tree did damage to a camper. So we're in the process of trying to get some trees out of there. The trees are actually on Department of Highways property. And, uh, they don't, will not help us with it. They said all they would do would give us a beautification permit, which would allow us to cut the trees down. So now we... Renee's been getting bids. And we don't know whether to just try to cut the trees out there, it, it's a species of trees that-
Ash.
Ash trees that the bugs got into, and, and now, if we can tell which one are ash, and I think Renee says we could, but then...
We need some leaves come on, the other ones that leaves don't come on.
Well, that, that's what I said, but Renee said, no, we can tell what they are now. But I, I talked to one guy that can cut them down, but he says it's gonna be a job to go ahead and sort out to get the bad trees out of there, because the other trees are in your way. His idea was clear cut, just cut everything you can, hide it up on the hill, but if anything does fall, it won't.
Well, that's not, I don't know if that's a great idea, because then you're gonna have a landslide. Because then those trees are probably holding the banking, because it's pretty steep back there. You cut all those trees out, then nothing's holding the ground, then you're gonna-
Yeah, but that is a problem.
So then when you park your car out there, it's gonna get full of mud.
Bad, working on the ash trees. Well, anyway, we'll see what we can do about that.
All right, moving on down to waivers and settlements.
We have two waivers.
Probably is. Hey, only way out, Clear Pass EDA building started painting it, it's a light, well, it's a sage green. You know, I think it's turning out really nice.
It, it'll, it'll be green.
The white jet printing, the green and white. You like that?
Yeah, I signed it yesterday.
Today, today, today.
When we came down earlier.
Yeah, I think it's gonna turn out really nice.
It'll be done by Memorial Day too, like at least-
Oh, yeah, it'll be done tomorrow.
I mean, at, at least it will be-
Open?
Will be open.
Oh, yeah.
What building are we talking about?
The EDA building, the, the one where I moved my space, and the EDA office down to the new building was high jet printing. That used to be John Ward's building, that's where, you know, my office will be in the EDA.
Move down the vault?
Yeah, I believe in the vault.
Yeah, it's something I'll get to, Patricia.
Yeah, I know. Yeah, I believe in the new building.
Well, you get your security out there.
Well, yeah, I'll call by, so it's gonna be, it's gonna be-
Life is a lot simpler, she's someone else.
It's a good one.
Like, enter a motion to approve the waivers?
I'll make the motion, we approve.
Motion made, and second, to approve the waivers, none are opposed, motion passes. Do we have a exonerations and consolidations?
We do, we have two consolidations and eleven exonerations.
Two dollars and twenty-seven cents. Twenty-seven dollars. Twenty-nine dollars.
Listen, I don't make them, I'm just passing them.
Luckily, Tony, they're all small.
Okay.
Twenty-one dollars and fifty cents.
I don't like to see no big exonerations.
Eighteen dollars and seventy-two cents.
Five hundred dollars, six hundred dollars.
Seventeen dollars and thirty-two cents, so I think, I think we'll still be able to-
Take care of the bathrooms?
Afford to pay the bills. Bring all the bathrooms.
Amen, I say.
Get Sam over, make it go next.
Great, 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 great kid that ever born there, richer than him.
Financially, financially.
I tell you, when I went to Italy, it was, you went into a big room, and they had lines of stalls. And it didn't matter if you were a man or a woman, you chose an empty stall. And then when you came out, across the other side were the sinks, and you went to a sink and you lost friends, and you lost. It didn't matter if you were a man, woman, however you identified, you went into a room and you chose a stall.
Yeah, the Romans built that, wasn't it?
So it went from the top to the bottom, it was just a stall. You just chose a no urinal.
The stalls had doors on them?
Yeah, you do it with a no urinal.
I went to Ephesus and Athens, and I took these off. They had a big room in there, and you'd sit down on a ledge, and there were no doors, no stalls, no nothing. If you went, you, if you didn't have the one or the two, you'd just go in and sit down, you did?
I move approved the exonerations and consolidations.
I'll second, boy, didn't sign those two or more.
Motion made, and second, to approve the exonerations and consolidations, none are opposed, motion passes.
I'll sign the two of them on the way down, and then you can do the rest, then.
Thanks. All of them. Can I stamp those?
I wouldn't say one off. How do you say my name, Steve?
That'll be the next thing I want to do for today, do my bathroom.
Make that warm water.
Jump ice cream.
Define, do I golf? Am I good enough to swing?
Yes.
At the ball?
Yes. Nobody's good at golf.
If you want to say, you gotta define, do I golf?
Nobody's good.
I'm definitely not good at golf.
One thing I learned about golf real quick is that everybody's terrible.
I might have to go more.
If you're good, if you're good, you cheat.
I can see that, Jerry.
I'm the guy down there swimming in the pond like from a ball validator.
I can see that with you, yeah.
See, you're a good guy.
Shoulder. Just-
Timberman?
Timberman.
It's time to quit.
Yeah.
You know?
When you're walking out.
I'm more willing to say he heard a helicopter going over his head, and he's not quitting. That's it, I'm gonna-
That's all right.
I paid my, paid my dues with my swing role, and I'm good.
Yeah.
Oh, my God, how consistent we all golf.
My grandson's trying to learn to play golf.
Oh, yeah?
Actually, he's at the golf course, well, four bad darb.
Joseph teaching her to play.
Yeah, he, he wants to learn. I think they were having a little tournament with four or five of his buddies today.
How old is he?
Uh, fifteen.
They say he's, is he sixteen now?
No, not quite.
He's fine.
He's got his learner's permit. He's driving, somebody with him.
All right, do we have any public concerns?
Hello, say anything? I'm gonna talk about restrooms or anything?
No more bathroom talk.
If there's no, uh-
No public concerns, then we'll entertain a motion to approve the bills.
I'll make the motion, we paid it and billed.
Motion made, and second, to pay the bills, motion passes.
Locks for one.
Well, you know, once he gets that program set up, he won't have a thing.
Yeah, a lot of those will go away once P-cars get online. And it's already been approved, so.
How, how we approve them here?
It's purchased, so the reason for this is because when you get audited and stuff, it's a- It's purchases, so the reason for this is because when you get audited and stuff, it's to have an audit trail to go back to the auditor's office. The P card system is already through the auditor's office. So you set your bills up to be paid by that P card. Then somebody tracks it to the auditor's office. Taking one step out of the equation, Tony, less paper.
Twenty, twenty-three thousand dollar jail bill.
Yeah, we, they want another bathroom, we don't have.
We have one bathroom.
Yeah. Be great if we could add another one, but.
The girls, like, just like the law, we get to go first.
That's true.
And they have a bunch of gentlemen there, a lot of that. So you'll hear tongues drop and then you go, everybody beat your feet to the bathroom.
Cause you came before they leave the house.
You darn right, but you don't know when you're coming back. And God bless those people at the Ephesian Church, that big hobby in their, in their communion home. They were.
This is a blessing, I'm a thank you.
Throw you out there. Try kind of guess what Hodges.
I think what's sad is our church never used to have a lock on it for, for ever.
I'm grown up, you never locked your doors or anything in the house.
Nope.
So you have to now.
Oh, someone pitched I can do that today, really, yes. First time I've seen a little child in quite some time.
I don't think she did. She didn't know. Fun question. Just something file with it, to put, you know what I mean?
Do you, do you want, do you want to reach out to Patricia after, she never had a formal letter request for the fifteen hundred?
Oh, okay.
Just so I have something to put a file for what she requested and what it was for.
Sam, did you get my task about Bear Street today?
Yes, I did, thank you.
You're welcome.
Can you reach out to whoever the new John Corio is and see if they're done with that project? Cause if they're done with that project, that's respectable.
Kevin told me that he knows it's supposed to be paid, but he does not have a schedule. He doesn't think it's actually been scheduled.
So I'm hoping they're not done, because they, they can't.
Well, they's going to pay this, I know that.
They can't leave it like that.
Barrett Street.
Have you been on Barrett Street? They fixed Barrett Street.
They fixed.
Just left it wrecked.
I'll see if I can find out, like, when it's on the schedule, we'll say hello.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
I just know it's. It's bad and. The, the lake opens up in a month and a half, so, a month now.
Well, it's bad when we have patients in the back, cause you get rocked.
Oh, yeah.
Like crazy, especially when someone has a broken bone and there are already immense amount of pain and that just makes things worse.
There's no avoiding it either.
No, you can only go so slow.
Right, and if you're in the lane going toward town, that whole right side of the, there's no berm. I mean, it's, it's that far in the, inside the white line, it's just destroyed.
Yeah, we have that.
I thought they were gonna fix the big hump right there, that, where it's sunk for the log, that's what I thought they were gonna fix. It's still there.
You, you hit that, that ass nugget, you think you got that, you're exaggerating.
Well, especially if you're kind of, and you're not aware.
Right, right.
Cause if you're aware, it's kind of noticeable, then you're probably, you know.
Very good, buddy, got some bills to do.
Jared, you should be proud of those holes of yours.
Yeah, they do my job.
I, I sort of sprung that on him, I told him, because we had talked, there was one other group, the older group was going to Harrison County Commission to request as well. And I told my oldest daughter, I was like, this is something for you guys, it's a nice thing. I was like, would you present it? I was like, because it's technically, it's gonna benefit you guys.
Right.
Absolutely, so she sent me today and I proofread what she wrote and I was like, sounds fine, I said, it'll be okay.
I sat down with that now, I said, are you talking? She said, no, she's afraid to even say her name.
Where are they, sixth and eighth grade?
Seven, seven.
Seventh and eighth grade.
Seventh and eighth?
Yes, seventh and eighth.
Kiara, Jordan, Paisley and Natalie are all.
All seventh grade. The teams we played, uh, this weekend were eighth grade teams, so eighth graders going into ninth grade. And our team is comprised of, we have eleven players, nine of which are seventh graders. We only have two true eighth graders and they still brought home second. And some of the kids were a lot bigger than us. They actually had, the one team, the ninth grade team in the age group above us had the number one eighth grade prospect in the country. It's already has offers from UConn and she's about six-five, six-six, eighth grader.
Six-six?
Yes.
Wow.
She's number one prospect in the nation right now as an eighth grader.
She's twenty-two.
I have been to these tournaments where I lived, I asked the coach one time, I said, can I see her driver's license? Cause they drove this.
I mean, that's what we felt about some of the boys that we played against, so, some of the ability football teams.
Yeah.
One of the boys had, oh, he drove here with his wife and kids in his titties.
You get in other areas and kids are just built different, I mean, that's just all there is to it.
Wait, there a boy at the middle school who's over sixteen tons?
Yeah, there's two of them that are going in the, well, one's an eighth grader. He played basketball, I can't remember his name, do you know him? Can't remember his name. One of them is Kelly LaRue's nephew or, I think his name's Trey.
Well, how tall is Kayden Taylor?
He's up there too.
He's up there.
Trey's probably six-five going into eighth grade. This Trey.
How about JT Veltrey, how big's tall he?
JT's probably six-two.
I've never met the boy that's gone.
You need to find, find your name.
Yeah, I know, I wanted to take him to parents out to eat just for keeping the Veltrey name in the village. Haven't gotten worked out yet.
There's a bunch of these daters.
That's what I'm, so I'm told.
I remember, he's still giving stuff to her, even though I have to call multiple times to get changed.
Were you there for the seven-on-seven or the team from DCK?
Yes, I was.
They were like grown men.
Yeah, I was.
Okay, good, good.
She's on vacation until next Thursday.
I don't know, uh, that, and that would be, I got the other one there. I see y'all.
Thank you, guys.
Yeah, it was nice to see all the good things that are happening. I think people should know those things, so.
Absolutely.
I did, I wasn't live streaming, I'm just recording it so people can see these good things that are, that are going on, cause it felt very positive, so. All right, see you guys.